All right. Quick, please, follow roll.
Winters.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Hanifer.
Here.
Stelling.
There.
Wallace.
All right. Item four is Discussion and Action on Consent Agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at C Council meetings, will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of November 19, 2018. Approval of Claims in the Amount of $225,164.28 and Payroll Expenses of $251,899.59. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, second by Mr. Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hanifer?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item six, Reports. Item A is the Alba Hospital Authority Meeting on November 20, 2018. Dr. Hanifer?
Sherman, Medical Report. Starting off, number one, good news. We did have an overall profit again. All three entities have made money, which is a good thing. Some of the increased volume was definitely in our clinic visits. Patient volume was up, especially with flu shots and things like that. Did have some hires. We hired five nurses in the hospital, two in the nursing home, one in dietary, one in the homestead. We did not have any credentialing committee items. In Quapi, we did talk about continuing to review and meet standards for critical access. Evaluated an emission, new emission software process. There's talk that we might be looking at renaming our clinics for a rural health clinic title, and that will again help us to, help us get better reimbursements. And then another thing I just thought would be interesting to report, the homestead is growing some of their own fresh fruits and vegetables that are using at the homestead, which I thought was a good thing. They're still working on our audit, and I did have, I know Councilman Hamilton asked me a question about transfers to St. Anthony, and I did check them out. They do track all transfers, and so far, up to that point, there was 51 to St. Anthony's, so averaging about six or seven. And behalf of, oh, and they are, we are policies, reviewing our tobacco policy to possibly start including vaping, since that's becoming more and more prevalent.
Answer any questions? Any questions for Dr. Hanifer? Thank you. Item D is Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on November 21, 2018. Mr. Eckhart?
Not sure. I think I might have been error, or we spoke to this meeting last council meeting. We do have a regular scheduled meeting this Wednesday, so I think I would mention that earlier. I would catch you.
All right. I suppose there won't be any questions. Next item is Planning Commission Meeting on November 26. Ms. Hamilton?
Well, I think you've seen most of it in the newspapers. We did vote to put three of us on the new land, strategic land plan, a use plan, and those are myself, no question, I don't remember. Who else?
Charles Murrow.
Charles Murrow and Kristin Cornelia. And so we still have to come up with two more names to add to those, to those from the public, and we're working on that.
And we will be approving those recommendations from the Planning Commission later in this agenda. Does Council have any questions for Mayor? Thank you. Item D is Alba Public Library Board Meeting on December 3, 2018. Mr. Eckhart?
They had the meeting at a lunch meeting, so I was unable to attend up until the very, I got there right at the very end of the meeting, so I wasn't able to attend the regular part of that. So, I'll work.
And you know, I wasn't able to attend that either, somehow. It was right next door, but.
You did make it to lunch.
You made it to lunch?
That's good.
Library provides, I'll just add this in here, part of some of the things that the library does is they have a regular time that they spend out at the homestead each month with our residents, check out books and that kind of stuff, and we always like to have them out once a year for one of their meetings, and so. Do they generally do that in December?
And their minutes are directly following the council, the agenda and the back end.
Yes. The epidemiology room getting prepared. Is that gonna, and they're gonna try out for a banquet grant? Is that, have they turned that yet, or do we not?
Do not believe that that issue's been turned in yet.
Turned in yet?
Are there any other questions from the council regarding the library meeting? Thank you. Next item is the Alba Regional Airport Commissioner Report. We had a pretty good agenda, but due to the engineer not being available for the meeting, we did table discussion and action on preliminary engineering report for our airport improvement plans, as well as discussing and acceptance of the engineering report, actually, two different airport improvement plans, and then as well as capital, five-year capital improvement plan. We will take those back up when we have our January meeting. In general, things are going pretty well out at the airport. Starting to see some more jet traffic. Fuel sales continue to be good. Almost all of the hangars have been rented that were recently constructed, so. Real pleased with the leadership that Tyson Tucker has had out there, and he's got some really good helper out there, Greg. Can't remember Greg's last name. Greg is a good hand out there, so things are going really well out at the airport. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Next item is the Cemetery Board Meeting on December 12, 2018. Lenny? Mr. Reed?
Good evening. We met. Room right down the hall here. Dr. Bell from the college and Jesse Klein attended their first meeting. I want to thank the council for increasing the number from three to five. That way I don't feel guilty if I run into somebody and they ask me a question or something. Just the highlights, apparently there is a north gate somewhere along the cemetery, and apparently some high school kids are going through that gate with their vehicles and doing some donuts in an area, so where the section is going to be looking at getting a more secure lock and gate, maybe a little bit taller for that area. We elected officers for the coming period of time. I was elected chair and then asked if I wanted to change my phone number. Linda Martin is the new vice chair, and Angelique has been reelected as our secretary. We had some discussion on the curb situation, about the possibility of allowing people to go back into putting in curves, if these may be flat on the ground around sections, like a family section, not individual plots, and that is going to be investigated by the section. We also want to begin the process to plot, I think that's the right term, the area of the northwest, if you go into the cemetery on the west side, all the way back to the north and put in blocks, I believe it's 18 through 25, to begin opening up that area. That may take a couple of years, hiring a surveyor and that type of responsibility. That was basically it from the audience. Apparently, I didn't know this, but there's a gopher situation, and apparently that we need to come up with a better way of dealing with it than just putting the little pellets down the hole, because apparently, besides being a cemetery, it's becoming a gopher heaven also. That is basically the report.
Does Council have any questions for Mr. Reed?
I have no suggestions on the gophers either.
Somebody finds out the good hunting idea.
Yeah. Be sharing. At my house, we put, I put a lit fish post back there with a tin can, and they don't like the rattling, but I don't know that we want to do that in the cemetery.
There is one thing. Like in the oldest part of the cemetery, the graves are like six feet to eight feet wide, and now with the new area, they're gonna be 10 feet long because of the requirement of the vaults, so there's been a change there. So the new plots will be larger.
On the gopher situation, juicy fruit or Bill Murray? That's my, my heart mentioned Bill Murray, but could hire Bill Murray. No, we can't get him.
We can't get Bill down here. I'm sorry to take care of that.
Might be a good draw. Putting juicy fruit down the hole, my grandma always swore to that, so I don't know.
Thank you.
Yes, we talked.
Item G is the Finance Committee Report. Dr. Hanifer?
Talked about several things tonight. We reviewed and signed our large, our claim sheet. Again, some of our large claims are what we usually hear about, our bulk fuel, debt service, and then we also, with the hotel tax funds, had $26,000 for the big cruise and car show that was spent. On the finance report, which you'll hear from Joe Don here in a minute, positive news, our sales tax is up again, $24,000 compared to last month, $35,000 compared to last year at this same time, which is a positive. We talked about some new projects that we're gonna have to start really thinking about and planning for. One is our water wells that were contaminated. They're gonna cost a little bit more to address, to fix those things, anywhere from tearing down and building up the wellhouses, expanding the floor, electrical. So right now, we're kind of checking to see what we can do and some of the supplies that we can get to make it less expensive and do some of the work ourselves. We also found out from DEQ that eventually, or by May, we're gonna have to have a plan to replace, to do that all, for all our wells, and we'll have that by next May, and also we'll have those two completed by next May. The second item we talked about again is our swimming pool. We're looking to try to get some ideas of our minimum cost to fix what has to be fixed to get it open next year, and to come up with a developmental plan for the future, get input from our community to see what type of facility they want, and then again, talk about financing for both. Capital needs right now, we're not spending too much. We're really being, you know, scrutinizing all our purchases. Grants, we've turned in both of our grants, our TAP grant and our REIT grant. Have not heard anything back from either one of those. Ongoing projects, our HVAC project, which obviously, while we're out here, is moving along. We do have agenda item for later on, for a change order, but hopefully completion is still looking like February. Talked a little bit about the comprehensive land use plan, which again, we'll address today, or tonight, and the chlorination station, and I think that was it. I'll answer any questions.
Does Council have any questions? The DEQ also, is that just standard for everybody now?
Yes. And it's, I mean, we can decide, we don't have to, there's about a time limit that they're putting on where we have to have them all, but we have to be, so if we decide to do three, four a year, we have to have that in place.
Any other questions from the council? As far as my report's concerned, it's, everybody knows it's a busy time of year. I would take just a moment and commend some of the things I've been able to participate in, and if I didn't participate in it, I would have liked to, but good stuff going on in town. Christmas related, I mean, we've had the breakfast with Santa, and we have a roomful of people that probably had something to do with that, but the fire department and police department, and I'm not sure who all else, but I was informed that it was the largest, or one of the largest crowds they've had, and by some time, kiddos coming down to see Santa at the firehouse, so that was a good deal. Of course, PD just, this weekend, had their shop with the cop day, where they took several of the youth in the community to Walmart, 20 kids, Joe Don's showing me 20 kids, out to Walmart and did some Christmas shopping for them, and you know, for some of those kids, it's a really good deal, and glad that they could do that. Of course, earlier in the month, it was busy as well. We had, looked like a really good turnout, turnout for the Christmas craft fair at the fairgrounds. We had a, you know, the lights are up around the square. We had a nice Christmas parade, and so, you know, all of those festivities have gone off well, and then the homestead had one of its largest Christmas open houses that's had in the last, you know, few years, probably around 150 people in attendance for that, so that was great. Rotary Club had their Toys for Tots thing on Saturday as well, along with the police department doing their Kids and Cops thing, and there were, I think, 115 kiddos at the Rotary Toys for Tots at the fairgrounds. And not Christmas related, but definitely want to give a big shout out to the public schools. They've started a strategic planning process that I think is, they've hired the right consulting group, and they've got a good, good start. They've started, they're two days in, and to a five-day process of two days in December, two days in January, one day in March, where they are well on their way to a long-range plan for the Alba Public Schools. Commend the school board, commend Superintendent Argo, and I really appreciate everybody that attended from the community, but especially the high school kids that were there that helped with that process. I tell you what, our schools are, we've always, I've always felt, and I think most people do, that feel like we have some really great schools, and that we have some great, you know, faculty and staff, and really, we have some great kids that come out of our school system and turn into the folks that end up leading our communities, and I just can't say enough how impressed I was with the first two days of the strategic planning process, and I look forward to what they end up turning out when that's all said and done. Other than that, I think Joe Don will probably talk about the Christmas party, but I'll answer any questions anybody may have from my report. All right. Thank you. Joe Don, City Business Manager's Report.
Well, first of all, to start, I'll tell you a little bit about our finances. We've collected about $4.4 million over the past five months, and to kind of give you a comparison, that's about $527,000 more than what we collected for the same time last year. A lot of that has to do with our sales tax and our utility revenues being increasing. As far as our expenditures are concerned, we have expended about $5.6 million, which does include the water storage tank, some of those expenditures, our water sewer line, and some of those expenditures. But right now, we are, we have either spent or encumbered about $340,000 less than what we had for the same timeframe as last year. So we're really trying to keep an eye on what our expenditures are, watching our revenues very closely, and trying to keep a, trying to get the best bang for our buck, is so to speak, for our, for our expenditures. As far as some of the other things that have happened over the past month, I did attend via teleconference the OML Legislative Committee. This legislative was a special meeting on December 12. The major purpose for the special meeting was to discuss the new legislation that's coming up in the medical marijuana industry. Talked about the establishment of the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana and Patient Protection Act, and creating the Oklahoma Medical Marijuana Authority. This new authority will address most of the issues dealing, relating back to the new medical marijuana industry. One of the other side conversations that was had was a new, some new legislation is being proposed for a county home rule. This is proposed as a joint resolution directing the Secretary of the, Secretary of State to prepare an election question amended in the Oklahoma Constitution. Right now, the Oklahoma Municipal Legislative Committee is not supporting this language. It is, it is harmful to, the way it is written, it is harmful to cities. We've talked about the Kids and Cops. Christmas party, had a, on November 30th, had the annual city Christmas party. Was very, I felt very well attended. Had about 112 attendees. Honored our people, honored our achievements for one year, five year, 10 year, 20 year, 25 year, and 30 year pins. We've got employees that are, that didn't get, some of them didn't get recognized because they weren't there, but we do have 40-year employees working for the city of Alba, so kind of keep that in mind, you know, we've got dedicated employees that try all the hard to accomplish what the board sets out as their mission. Some of the projects that we've got going on. Talked a little bit about the HVAC project. We do have an agenda item later on, asking for some extension of time, and we'll talk about that then, but the contractors, about 95% complete with the police station side of the HVAC process, and right now, the plan is to have it be moved back into the city hall and customer service offices and the council chambers by February 1st. We'll just have to see how this transpires, and not this weekend, but next weekend, we've slated, we've scheduled the asbestos abatement people to come in and take care of that over the weekend. We do our waterline project that we've got coming in from the well field. We have received all of the pipe needed for that project and just awaiting permits and fittings. Should have DEQ permits within the next couple of weeks, and Russell didn't give me a timeline on the fittings, but we've got that coming up pretty quick. The only thing we're waiting on for our chlorination station and to get that bid out is DEQ permits. That should be not this week, but next week. I expect to have those permits in hand, and we'll be able to start that process. And I do want to mention right now that the street department is out working, doing crack sealing on our streets, so if you see them, please give them enough room. Don't run over our street department guys. We did, we have, we are in the final testing phases for a new work order system. This is the, once we've got all the, got all of our kinks worked out of that, we will be opening that up for, for the public to use. It's a pretty neat system, whereas that you can download an app to your phone, and if you see a problem, you can basically take a picture with your phone, email it to, and it'll email that to the appropriate person, and we can start some communication back and forth with the customer as far as the repair of that particular project. Our swimming pool, as Councilman Hanifer mentioned a little bit earlier, we are looking at trying to see what the minimum is to get that back up, to get that back open this year. Right now, we've got a, the minimum requirements plan is being prepared by Lock and Aquatics. I expect to have that, again, in the next couple of weeks. As soon as we have that in hand, we'll be able to start having public meetings, to start the discussions on, with our citizens about what they expect our pool to look like when we get finished. Again, Dr. Hanifer did talk a lot about our well field rehabilitation. It is gonna be quite, it is really more expensive than what I was going to, what I was expecting. Right now, the engineer's estimate is going to be approximately $24,000 per well. We will have the two contaminated wells repaired by May 30th, and that will be well number 64 and 66, and by the same time, we'll have a plan in hand for the other, for the other 28, 29 wells that we've got. We'll know a little bit closer on that cost number. We do expect that to go down, but we've got some wells, you know, some wells is gonna be cheaper, some wells is gonna be close to the $24,000, but we'll know that a little bit closer to the time of, closer to May. As far as community development issues we've got going on, the city is working on a building facade grant program. The Economic Development Committee is working on that. We're trying to put the final touches on that, get it sent over to legal for any final advice before we present back to this council for approval. We are still working on the strategic plans. We'll have eight out of the 10 people appointed tonight for that. Hopefully, we will be able to start having meetings in late January concerning the land use. During the month of November, as far as planning, as far as building permits and things, we had about 11 permits issued over the last 30 days. There was one electrical, five mechanical, and five plumbing permits. We are, the addresses that are slated to be demolished are 722 Choctaw, 928 Barnes, 1437 Young, possibly, 414 Ceiling. We will be going out for bids on those. We're making final notifications to property owners now. As far as our plans, and by the first part of January, we'll have, hopefully have quotes in on the demolition of those properties. Kind of a human resources section. We have had, we've terminated one EMS employee. We had one street department employee give us two weeks' notice. We've hired a sanitation employee, and I hired a street employee this morning, if everything works out right. We are still searching for part-time and full-time EMS employees and a part-time police officer. Our grants, both our Safe Trust School Grant and our TAP and our REIT grant, we're still waiting notifications for. Another human resource issue, Taylor Keplinger, one of our police officers, will be completing, our newest police officer, will be graduating from Cleveland this month, and we'll be, we're looking forward to having him back on the streets. And Mayor and Council, that would be my report. I will be happy to answer, try to answer any questions that you may have.
Does Council have any questions for Joe Don? I just want to add to, council members have had an opportunity to download the See Click Fix App for their phones and start using it. If you have not done so, I'd encourage you to go ahead and do that. There's quite a bit of, it was more than I was expecting. It's, I even paid my water bill from it the other day, so there's, it's good stuff, I think. And if there's anything about it you'd like to see modified or whatever, get with Joe Don, but I think our community's gonna really like it once we get caught up with the initial wave of. the initial wave of work orders that are sent through the system.
And this breaking break, and maybe we everybody, I mean, do a little testing and take pictures because I know some of it says, well, does it not like notify you that there's something maybe near your area that lets you know that somebody else has turned something in? I was thinking I saw that on their tour.
You ought to be able to turn, right now if you download the app, you ought to be able to turn in anything to the, to the department head. If it doesn't, it comes to me and then I will, I will assign that to the department to complete. It'll notify you of that assignment, and it'll let you know who that department head is and they'll start that dialogue between you and that department head.
I was thinking there's something where maybe, if there's something else in the area that notified you, like they said something.
What kind of something?
Well, if somebody else has turned something in.
Oh, yes, if, it'll, it'll let you know if something is, if you are looking at an issue that has already been turned in or we are working, or we are currently working on it, yes.
Anything else for Joe Don? All right, thank you. Item seven is a recognition of volunteer firemen for the completion of firefighter one training by Assistant Fire Chief and Fire Marshal Brian Miller. Will be reporting on Sam Fleming, Glenn Cushenberry, Gavin Willard, Tyler Willard, Nick Davis, Chase Eisenbart, and Adam Grimsley. Marshal Miller.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. We're going to do a presentation tonight for seven of the volunteers that attended our 2018 Firefighter One Academy here in Alva. Some of you guys weren't around before the training facility got built, so I wanted to just speak a little bit about that. That training facility was totally constructed by the labor of the street department for doing all the concrete work and no tax dollars, which is really cool because it's about a half a million dollar facility that's out there. It was done by funding from grants or local trusts that donated to them or donations that came into us from like Sandridge, they gave us all the pipe, they gave us the tank battery that was out there. And it gives these guys the ability to train at home instead of having to leave their jobs and travel to Stillwater or to Hutchison, and we have to pay them. So we can do that stuff here now, and we've been running several academies now, OSU's using us for training sites. As I reported to Joe Don, and our past meetings and managers' meetings in the morning, Oklahoma State University has put us out for bid for another fire academy here in Alva. So that's people across the state that can come here and actually train in Alva. And these guys right here, you know, put blood, sweat, and tears into building this. You know, of course, you know, our training props and things that have to be built were bought, but no tax dollars, and that's a pretty cool thing that's happening there. So we were able to construct this academy here for our guys, and what that does for us is, is each time that we are evaluated by ISO for our insurance ratings, they turn to our training records and they ask, and they want to know what these training levels these guys are at. And I asked a lot out of them. We probably train more than most departments that are combination departments that have full-time volunteers, just ask their wives and their kids, the time that they spend away from on that. And that's something that's really commendable with these guys, and I ask a lot out of them, and they do it. So when you go into a firefighter one academy, it's based off of a 70% standard. That's the passing rate on that. And when I looked at this curriculum and everything, I didn't like that. I don't think 70 is good enough. So I raised that bar to 80% on that. And each one of these guys right here blew that out of the water because that's the time and the dedication that they have given to this community away from their families and the effort that they put into it. So I got a little statistics here that I pulled today, and when you take these classes and you get what's called an ISAC accreditation, okay? That's International Fire Service Accreditation Congress, and that's how they get their certification. They have to take their test and they have to get a 70% dollar bet. Some of the things that's happened with these guys is the total grade point average through their class, the average of it was 96.0. And I gave them an A, but they put the time and the effort into that that they went beyond. And I think that's commendable to tell these seven guys right here the effort that they put in there. But this class started on March 19th in 2018, and we ended our testing and our live burn days in April 3rd, 2018. We've just kind of been waiting for stuff to come in so we could actually hold this this year. Oh, sorry, ended June 30th, 2018 on that. But before I get to the helmet presentation, I'm going to ask Mayor Parker and Manager Joe Don to come up here as we present these, but before I do that, I'm going to give out one award before we hand out our helmets, and these are, these helmets represent their completion of firefighter one. Okay, when they're hired on, they're required to get this now. And this was a requirement that came between all of us, full-time and volunteers, that we said that you have three years from the time that you get on to complete it. This is a 96-hour course with eight hours of certification after that that they have to do, and they have to complete it within three years. And this was because they wanted to do it. They took it upon a vote, we put it in, on it. But the award I want to give tonight goes to the highest grade point average within the class. Went in, did the work, learned it, and did a really good job, and the grade point average was 97.02 for the class, and that goes to Adam Grimsley. But it is with respect to these guys that there wasn't a single person under 94. So very commendable of these guys. So Mayor Parker, Mayor Dunne. I'll call your names and you guys will come up here and receive your helmets. Alphabetical order, left to right. First one's going to be Glenn Cushenberry. Sam Fleming.
Well, and I'll just, thank you, Brian, for all that information, and you guys, thank you for your commitment to our community and the surrounding areas. I know that you guys spend a lot of time, especially in springtime, out to help them make sure that the rest of us could be safe here in town, and it, a thank you just really doesn't cut it. Proud of you guys for this achievement. Just makes our whole community better when we have guys like you that not only put the time in, but also get the achievements that go along with it. So thank you guys a whole lot. We really appreciate it.
All right, item eight is the presentation and review of the updates to the city council handbook and 2018's stability test scores. Mr. Dunne.
Well, this is, you know, we voted on this about a little over, a little over a year ago and decided to make this a regular part of our training for council members. The new council handbook is out in the Dropbox for you to review in its entirety, but the parts that I'd like to hit kind of highlight are, one, stability test scores. What you've got there in the packet shows what council felt, what department heads felt, and then what staff felt as far as how they ranked us, ranked the city, and then what our scores were over the past, that should have been two years, one of those is the 75 years should have been September 19th of 2017, and then 119 of 2016. And if we look at our council, what the council felt, first, you know, last year, two years ago when we started it, council felt we were at 66, and those are what the council's scores were then. The next year, after a year's worth of efforts, we had improved to an 75. This year, we've improved again to an 80 as far as council is concerned. As far as, if we average them all together, we're about at a 72, we're at a 72, about three points under what the council thought we were in 2017. The thing, I think what we need to do as far as this is concerned is educate our staff on what the council does, the stability of the city, and some of those issues, some of the areas that we, communication felt was low, than, lower than last year, need to work with that on our staff. It kind of gives some guidance on what, how to better improve ourselves with our staff and thus our community. Also, part of the book packet is the municipal liability, not, you know, not part of the packet, but part of the manual is our municipal liability protection plan declarations page. On that, it shows the insurance that we have as far as limits of the liability, the government tort claims, and our aggregate insurances. Our deductible is about $1,000 per occurrence for personal injury and errors and omissions. But the, but then the tort claim kicks in also. We've got $25,000 coverage for property damage, loss of occurrence, including fire legal, $125,000 for the loss of occurrence, per loss of occurrence, up to a million dollars But that documentation is in the, in the manual. The other thing I'd like to hit on as far as the updates for the book besides the insurance declarations would be the updated demographic pages that are in our manual and also the updated budget. And that would be our, the new council handbook that's out there on the, on the website. I'd encourage each one of you to take time to review that. We do, I think Councilman Martin was the newest councilman. He should have both now, hard copy and I think your updates, your hard copies went out a month or so back, so it should be all current. By completing this tonight and the training that you have completed online, at the next council meeting, we will have a resolution presented to the council that says, for the council to approve that we've done all this. Once we have that resolution passed, we'll be eligible for another $6,000 grant from OMAD for recognition of best practices. And that would be the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council have any questions? This does not require any further action?
No.
Just from you to turn everything in?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Well, after we do, after we pass the resolution.
Okay. All right, moving on. Item number nine, and thank you, Joe Don, and it's for keeping us in line, getting the training and all that so we can get that grant. I know probably sometimes it's, might be challenging to make sure that we all get our education in and all of that, so thank you. Next item is discussion and action on resolution number 2018-012, calling for municipal elections to be held on April 2nd. Essentially, we have to approve that there are going to be municipal elections in order to, you know, fill the terms that are expiring after they expire. The, in the information you have in the packet, you can see the deadlines for filing are January 18th. The public notification, notice of the election resolution is January 25th. The timing of that means that we have to approve the elections, calling for the elections tonight unless we were to, I don't know why we wouldn't do it, but suppose a special election if we didn't. The, you can see the other calendar items there, and this will be for all wards, seat two in all wards. It'll also be for mayor, city clerk, city marshal, and the election will be April 2nd. The, I'm going to speak briefly back to the stability test, and one of our highest areas is the governing body stability, and so with that being what it is, I would encourage everybody that's got a current seat to really consider filing this next election go-around so we can continue the work, some of the work that we've started. All that said, the resolution's in there with the packet, and I'd encourage anybody else in the community that's interested in serving, that we would certainly not, or we certainly would welcome the interest from the community because I think when the voters have the choice to choose between different votes, we will often choose the better, so. That being said, I would entertain a motion on item nine.
Well, motion to approve resolution number 2018-012, calling for municipal election to be held on April 2nd, 2019.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve resolution 2018-012, calling for municipal election to be held April 2nd, 2019. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hansford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 10 is discussion action to enter into a DEQ funding agreement for local, state, and sovereign government entities to purchase equipment. Joe Don.
Well, this is a funding agreement with the Department of Environmental Well, this is a funding agreement with the Department of Environmental Quality to purchase some equipment, specifically a new limb chipper. The reason this is important for us to have is because it is, again, we have to have a DEQ permit that allows us to burn our limbs at the, at the limb pile down at the transfer station, and those are getting increasingly harder to get. We have been able to maintain that over the past year or so, but at the last renewal, they didn't renew it for the same length of time that they had, had previously. Just renewed it for a couple of months. So every, previously, by never six months, we had to go in and reapply. The last renewal, it was only two months. By getting the limb chipper, what it's going, this new limb chipper, what it's going to allow us to do is actually grind up limbs and chip them up, so that the public can go out and possibly pick those chips up and use them for the flower gardens, or be, or for the city to use in flower beds and whatnot. With the, with the Christmas season here, one of the big things that I heard recently was, and one of the big demands is for people to have pine, pine chips for their gardens. And once we, you know, we'll be collecting a lot of trees here pretty soon. The people that have gone out and bought real tree, Christmas trees, we're going to have to, we'll be taking a lot of those here. But this will allow us to manage our limb pile. It is a huge endeavor for us to do that. And ultimately, you know, the, the DEQ has told us that they would reimburse us up to fifty thousand dollars. We have found a, and we're going to be asking to declare our current chipper surplus here in a little bit, and to purchase another chipper for fifty thousand dollars. We'll be able to get about a ten thousand dollar trade-in on our current chipper, and then have a new chipper out there to be able to help manage our limb pile. Just as a side note, one of the things that we're doing now to try to help manage the limb pile, and it's been, it's been relatively successful, is that I've got a couple of guys that are on staff that will take those limbs and saw them up, with chainsaw, cut them into usable lengths for fireplace, stack them, and we, and then public can just come out and pick them up, pick up those limbs, yeah, pick up those, stack those cut limbs if they want them. And we've, every, been reported today that as soon as we get it cut out, cut up over the weekend, people picking them up and hauling them off. That's great. That allows the customer and the citizen to have those limbs to burn in their fireplace or in their chimenea, or whatever they're burning it in. They don't have to have that DEQ permit to do that. It eliminates that, it eliminates that burden off of us to try to manage that, manage that pile, because it does, it doesn't take much for it to get out of control. It's a huge deal. So with that, I would encourage you to approve this agreement for signature, so we can get it sent back into DEQ. We will not be buying, even though we're going to ask for approval to purchase the, the chipper tonight, we will not be purchasing that chipper until DEQ, the DEQ executive director and the administrator, administrative services director for DEQ signs this and sends it back to us. I want to make sure both parties have signed off on it, because it is a large expenditure for us, and want to make sure that we're going to get reimbursed for it. I do not, I do not think there will be any issue with that, but that's where we're at.
I would entertain a motion. Counselor.
Motion to approve entering into funding agreement with DEQ for local, state, and sovereign government entities to purchase equipment.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second, excuse me, motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Winters, to enter into a DEQ funding agreement for local, state, sovereign government entities to purchase equipment. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. The next two items, I'm going to talk about them together, and then you guys will act on them separately. The appointments to the hospital authority are reappointments. One is Mrs. Haley Simon, the other is Dr. Ken Brown. I will point out that on the agenda, it says term ending June twenty-twenty-one. These will actually be terms ending October twenty-twenty-three.
I'll apologize for that. That is a scrupulous error on my part. I picked up the wrong date off of the board page.
So, Dr. Brown and Haley have been on that board for quite a while, each of them now, and they are both willing to serve again in that capacity, and I think, you know, it was their service on that board has, has been exemplary. Therefore, I would entertain individual motions on each of these.
Make a motion to reappoint this Haley Simon to the Alba Hospital Authority for a term ending October two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve, or to reappoint Haley Simon to the Alba Hospital Authority for a term ending October twenty-twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion for Dr. Brown.
Make a motion to reappoint Dr. Ken Brown to the Alba Hospital Authority for a term ending October two thousand twenty-three.
Second. I'll throw it out on that one. Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, a second by Mr. Winters, to reappoint Dr. Ken Brown to the Alba Hospital Authority for a term ending October twenty-twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay.
Item thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, I'll also talk about together. But this is the strategic land use task force that the planning commission's been working towards getting put into place, so that we can start evaluating the way land is used in our community. Zoning lines, ordinances, all of that stuff. As we reported in past meetings, we're not going to need to, or it's not, it's not deemed necessary at this time to do a whole complete new plan, so the purpose of this task force would be to look at our existing plan and recommend revisions in the best interest of our community moving forward. The way the task force was voted to be set up in the planning commission and approved by council was to have ten members, three council members, three planning commission members, and two members at large from the community appointed by each group, so ten people altogether. I visited with all of the people here for items fourteen and fifteen, that will be appointments from straight through city council, and I have, and the planning commission, in their last meeting, voted to appoint Charles Murrow, Kristy Cornelia, and Mary Hamilton. I do believe that this task force will probably initiate work late January, maybe early, or maybe February, but that I do not anticipate this being a, you know, twelve months tops, probably, for the work of this task force, based on their, by actually being given up to this point. That being the case, the individuals I mentioned for the planning commission already, but for city council, Randy, Stelling, Brian Wallace, Daniel Winters, and then the members at large to be appointed by city council, I'm recommending Kathy Ernest and Norval Ritter. I would begin entertaining motions or answering questions, however you guys would like to proceed. We got to do, do we do them all three at once, or?
You can.
Do we have to?
You can do all three at once.
Okay.
Motion to approve the appointment of three planning commission members to land use task force, Charles Murrow, Kristy Cornelia, and Mary Hamilton.
Second.
Have a motion by, Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Winters, to appoint Charles Murrow, Kristy Cornelia, Mary Hamilton, as the three planning commission members to the land use task force. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Item fourteen.
Make the motion to appoint the three city council members listed those, Randy Stelling, Brian Wallace, and Daniel Winters, for the land use task force.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton, a second by Dr. Hannaford, to appoint Randy Stelling, Brian Wallace, Daniel Winters, as the three city council members to the land use task force. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
And item fifteen, Kathy and Norval.
All motion to approve the appointment of two at-large members to the land use task force, Kathy Ernest and Norval Ritter.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Sherman, to appoint Kathy Ernest and Norval Ritter, Norval Ritter, as the two at-large members to the land use task force. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. I'm anxious for that task force to get to work and see where we end up from there. Item sixteen, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Marianne, we're always glad to see you. Item seventeen, remarks and inquiries by council members. I failed to mention in my report, but the Congress of Mayors is coming up, January twenty, evening of the twenty-fourth, the all-day of the twenty-fifth. This is not just for mayors. If any council members would like to attend, this is where kind of us as locally elected officials get together and look at legislative priorities for municipalities that we're going to, you know, send up the ladder to the state government. If you have interest in attending, there is still time to get registered. Get with Joe Don or, get with Joe Don or Angelica, probably, you know.
Get with Angelica.
Get with Angelica. I was going to say probably Angelica, but.
What dates did you say?
Twenty-fourth should be a Thursday, if you got your calendar open. I don't have a.
Where's the date you said?
January.
January fourteenth?
Yeah.
Is that a, is that a, did you sign it yesterday?
No. Or maybe I'm looking at the wrong date.
What?
Was it the twenty-third, twenty-eighth?
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is Thursday, Friday in January.
I don't know. I just know it's in the charts.
I know I checked. The dates got in conflict with that.
The Congress of Mayors is Friday, January twenty-fifth.
Yes. Reception to that four is twenty. Brandon's attended. It, it's a good event.
It's a good event, yeah. Learn a lot about what's going around, going on around the state.
I would probably anticipate a lot of discussion about both the medical marijuana and the Hanaford, those are two pretty hot topics right now, as far as the legislative committees and so on.
Any other remarks, inquiries by council members?
I want to call it another Christmas party, whatever. It was excellent. I believe it was actually during, I thought it was mid-time. Good to see employees out, appreciate what they've done, years they've been there.
Definitely enjoyed it.
I did too.
I want to say awesome job on the Christmas lights, not only downtown, but I mean, just the number of businesses that have put up lights and decorations this year, I think is more than last time.
We did, thanks to Connor Martin, his landscaping crew.
I was not trying to plug Connor, but specifically.
I was.
He has done a great job. I mean, I tried to get him to do some stuff on mine, but apparently stuck as a no-go, so, but, no, I just, the, the number of decorations as we drove around, my kids love going around the square. We probably do it once a week, so even though there's nothing new, they can see it over and over and over again. And just the number of storefronts and buildings. I know the E&amp;J Insurance Professional, I mean, they had lights up and all the way down both Flynn and Barnes, just, I like to see the community participation. It was pretty awesome, so.
Beginning to look a little like Christmas.
A little bit.
I see people.
Taking pride in their property, yeah. Anything else? All right. Let's adjourn the city council meeting and call to order the utility authority meeting.
On an off-record note, I think we're going to have to start going to Marion for video review of who called, who put in the first and the seconds on the city council.
It's not going to matter.
Angelica, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace.
All right. Item three is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items are concerned, items of a, sorry, I wonder if you're looking. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at a UA meeting can be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and item B, approval of claims and the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-four cents, and payroll expenses of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Dr. Hannaford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
We're just going to call it the way I hear it. I may get it wrong, the front is the way it goes. Item five, discussion and action on fair plumbing's change order number one for the city HVAC renovation project, like Joe Don talked about in the council meeting. The, really the thing that has backed that project up has been the asbestos abatement. The change order is for days.
Fourteen days.
Not, I doubted you.
Oh, yeah.
F-O-U-R, I meant F-O-R, days of the project, that will be fourteen days, and I recommend we approve this.
Make a motion to approve change order number one. Make a motion to approve change order number one, adding 14 days, to the fair plumbing contract.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Hanifert and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve fair plumbing's change order number one, adding 14 days for the city HVAC renovation project. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. We will adjourn the utility authority meeting and open the economic development authority meeting. I, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hanifert?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace.
Item three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 19, 2018, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $215,550.54 and payroll expenses of $62,460.70. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Dr. Hanifert to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Item six is discussion and action to declare surplus and authorize disposal of a Vermeer chipper ID A V R C 14137P 1004156, which is no longer needed by the city of Alba. The, Joe Don talked about there in council meeting as well, with the grant we're getting for the new chipper, this would be declared surplus and turned in as a trade-in for $10,000.
Motion to approve to declare surplus and authorize disposal of a Vermeer chipper ID A V R C 14137P 1004156, which is no longer needed.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Martin to, actually, neither one of them? Eckhart. Change that M to an E. All right. Second by Mr. Eckhart to declare surplus and authorize disposal of a Vermeer chipper ID that's stated in the agenda, which is no longer needed by the city of Alba. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. We will adjourn the utility authority meeting and open the economic development authority meeting. I, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hanifert?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace.
Item three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board.